Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We want to welcome everyone to today's regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council, and I ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Here.
Mayor Budge?
Here, thank you. We also want to welcome everyone who will be watching us on cable or the Internet, and we want to remind anybody who wants to speak tonight to be sure to fill out a speaker card there in the rear of the room and submit them to our city clerk Stacy. I think we all want to acknowledge the fact that this has been a really rough week for our, or rough two weeks for our Rancho Cordova City family. All of us have lost a family member and our hearts are hurting. We want to obviously dedicate tonight's meeting to our fallen officer, Mark Stasiuk, to the members of his Russian-speaking family, to the members of his law enforcement family, and we want to pledge ourselves to go forth with a renewed strength of state, a renewed sense of strength and dedication to all of us being the best that we very best can be. So, obviously, we'll dedicate tonight's meeting to Mark Stasiuk. We're going to begin this meeting with a pledge of allegiance, as we always do, and I think I'm going to ask our Assistant Chief Chad Lewis to lead us in the pledge. And then if you'll, if you would like, please remain standing for an invocation from Anthony Telford, who is the Anatolia Ward Bishop member from the Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter Day Saints, and he will give the invocation. Chad, thank you.
Welcome. Ready and pledge.
[inaudible]
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be here tonight. We are grateful to live in this beautiful city of Rancho Cordova and to live in this wonderful free land. We're grateful for our freedom and our liberty and are grateful for those who have fought and continue to fight to defend our, our freedom. We are grateful for the firefighters and police officers and first responders of our community and everywhere. Please bless them. Please watch over them and protect them. We especially ask a blessing upon the Stasiuk family at this time, that they may be comforted and that they might know of, of your great love for them. We ask a blessing upon all those within our community and everywhere who are suffering, that they might, that their burdens might be lifted and that we, as a community, may know how to, how to help them. We are thankful for every individual and organization who lends a hand to assist those who are struggling and pray that they might know how to continue to lift those who, who need help. We pray for the rising generation, that they might be motivated and that they might be successful in their endeavors to succeed and progress. And Father, at this time, we ask a blessing upon this council, that they might be inspired and that they might be able to, although they may have different opinions, that they may be able to compromise and come to an agreement on the best direction for this community and this city. And we are grateful for all that we are blessed with, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Before we go into our presentations, we're going to ask our city clerk to read the cable TV announcement.
This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Wednesday, October 3 at 6:00 PM and Friday, October 5 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. So, our first presentation tonight is a proclamation recognizing the week of October 7 to the 13th as Code Enforcement Officer Week for the city, and we're going to ask Bob to do that.
I think you have a few more anyway than you started with, four or five or something like that. Proclamation given in recognition of Code Enforcement Officer Week, October 7 to 13th, 2018. Whereas the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of Rancho Cordova through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal services, environmental health, and life safety. Whereas code enforcement officers have challenged and demanding role, have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive recognition of the job they do in improving the quality of life for residents and businesses in local communities. Whereas the role of many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years with jurisdiction increasingly rely on the expertise and training of code enforcement officers in their communities. Whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goal of providing neighborhood deterioration enhancement to communities, ensuring safety and preserving property value through knowledge, training, and appreciation of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. Whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in the city of Rancho Cordova and regularly interact with the public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials in their capacity as code enforcement officers. Whereas the city of Rancho Cordova wants to recognize and honor the code enforcement officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way of improving quality of life within our community. Whereas at the City Council of the city of Rancho Cordova hereby proclaims the second week of October 2018 and annually thereafter be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Rancho Cordova. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby proclaim the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Week and calls upon the residents of Rancho Cordova to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers. Witness whereof, our mayor has set her hand and caused a seal of the city of Rancho Cordova to be affixed to this first day of October 2018. Congratulations. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
[applause]
I normally speak from the heart, but I wanted to just prepare a brief statement, if I might, and I said, I want to say that we want to thank the city council and many residents for their ongoing support of the code enforcement programs. I know on occasion we hear from people who are not quite so appreciative of our efforts to educate them on the standards that most of our residents embrace. I would be remiss in not sharing some of the other fine work that these men and women do in the community. When a senior resident had a serious plumbing blockage the night before Thanksgiving and no amount of plunging would resolve it, Russ and Keith had to sign a waiver and took to the roof with a snake, and yes, they are both qualified contractors. When a disabled couple were overwhelmed with health issues and stopped taking out the garbage and their home became infested with rats, we looked for ways to assist them to stay in their home. When SAC Metro Fire calls at 5:00 AM to tell us they have located a family with three children under five living in a rental unit that is actively going through mold and asbestos abatement, and they have no kitchen facilities, we find a way to relocate the family into a safe environment within hours. Vehicle accidents, falling trees, and fire decimates people's homes. We are there to ensure their safety and do our best to make them feel whole and supported. These men and women have installed missing house numbers, provided first aid to children during their daily rounds, and personally paid for hotel rooms and groceries for homeless people with small children. There are no ribbon cuttings or celebrations, and we would have it no other way. We desire to allow people in a moment of need to maintain their anonymity and dignity. I was recently asked by the city manager Cyrus what accomplishments we are so mostly proud of this year. It was very easy for me to say it was the random acts of kindness that these men and women do for the community. So I, I want to thank you for this, and I really appreciate your ongoing support, and I really love these men and women. So, thank you very much. [applause]
I think everybody's supposed to turn around and get a picture.
The person in charge now has the camera in her hands.
Garrett Donald.
[laughter]
Thank you.
[applause]
Okay, our second proclamation is...
Madam Mayor, could I make a brief comment on the first one?
Oh, please.
I just want to say, Carrie, those were very obviously heartfelt words, and, and every word of that, every syllable of that rang true with me. Because when I talk about what we are able to accomplish with code enforcement in Rancho Cordova to jurisdictions elsewhere in the state and the nation, people are shocked. Because generally, code enforcement is met with resistance from a community, and perhaps it's the way in which it's exercised or the way in which community or the city structure has failed to embrace it and use it properly. But in any case, we have risen far above what is expected and normal for code enforcement operations, and it's nothing that we've done here at this dais, really, that accomplishes that. It's all of you sitting out there who have accomplished that for us and for our residents. And as, and as you know, I view you as part of our public safety infrastructure here in Rancho Cordova. You guys do a vital task that is often thankless, as Carrie sort of suggested in some ways, and I'm sorry about that. So we should probably do this more often and sort of thank you guys for the great work you do, because you end up making us look good. You make all of our neighborhoods look good. You make our neighborhoods safer and better. You just have to think about a little kid walking to school or walking to a playground, and do they feel safe or do their parents feel safe in letting them do that? You guys are, are the folks who by and large improve those properties, establish a, a normal standard in our community, and allow people those normal occurrences that raises our quality of life. And there's no other tool in our tool belt as a city that will do that except for code enforcement. And you guys have done a stellar job that have set us apart from, from other cities in the, in that way. And so I just want to thank you on behalf of our residents and on behalf of the council for those really tremendous efforts.
Donald.
Yeah, I just wanted to, and Carrie's heard this story before, but I'm going to just repeat it, because it, it's, it's not what you do, it's how you do it that really makes the difference. And so, a lot of you know Ron Dwarvoss has worked with us in our asset-based community development work, and he has gone all, all over the world working with local governments and community organizations and organizing neighborhoods. And he said that he had never seen this happen before. Carrie got out of her car at an apartment complex on West Aloma, and there was 10 kids standing out there, and they all ran to her to give her hugs, because they knew her, they trusted her, and they knew that she was the lady, and the people that worked for her were the people that made sure that the places that they lived were safe and healthy for them. And he said that in all of his work in Chicago, all over the world, he has never seen children run towards a code enforcement officer in a good way and to even understand what they did for a living. And he said he had never seen that anywhere in all of the, the time that he's worked together. And it's because of the stuff that you just talked about. I know you and I were just talking about the house with rats earlier, or late last week, but it's those types of things, and, and it's funny, because in my former job that I ju, I just left, the number of times I would get calls from local residents and city council members and other places from around this region that didn't even understand their own programs, and the fact that you're seeking out this help or you're, you know, I know at least a couple of you, I remember a couple of years ago, somebody's carport was falling down, and on a weekend you went and tore it down for them so that it wouldn't fall on their cars. There's all kinds of stories like that that we, that we hear from, from your team. And it's interesting, because I know a lot of other code officers and directors in other cities and counties and around here, and you don't hear those kinds of stories. So, thank you for everything that you're doing. We're so lucky to have you here, and keep it up, because you set a very high standard for yourself. So, we, but we really do appreciate you.
Well, it is coincidental that, and, and very appropriate that both, both my colleagues have referred to the children, because when I go into schools and, and talk to kids, regardless of what grade they're in, actually, the first thing that I say to them is, think about how you get to school. You know, did you walk to school? Did you ride your bike? Or even if you drove, and what did you see on the way? And did you like it? Was it something pleasant and, and attractive? And the more we focus on the children, then ultimately, David, we won't have to worry about the fact that the adults don't like what Carrie and her staff do, because those children will grow up and be the residents who will have that higher standard that we've tried to work on and, and that they are working to instill in our community. Cyrus.
Thank you, Linda. I just wanted to echo what others have said. I'm, this is an incredibly passionate and dedicated team, and what I see and observe every day in performing the duties and the jobs that we have, it's definitely, everything we do and everything your team has been doing is above and beyond. So I'm very grateful and I'm very thankful for the great job that your team is doing and continue to, many, many few great adventures together in, in coming years. Thank you.
So, now we're going to call in David to present a proclamation in support of Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month. And David, you have the list of the people who are here.
I do.
Okay.
All right. So, I've got...
Thank you for filling out your speaker card.
The problem is I have three on my list, and we have two at the podium.
You're right.
Okay, so I'm looking for Mr. Peckham.
Mr. Peckham.
Aha. All right. So, Tim Schaefer?
Yes.
And Joe Vernet.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. All right. We have a proclamation in recognition of Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month, October 2018. I'll read the majority of it. Whereas manufacturing day is celebrated nationally on the first Friday of the month of October to showcase their facilities in an effort to educate the community about manufacturing career opportunities, and whereas the manufacturers provide over 35,000 jobs for the Sacramento region and over 12 million jobs nationally, whereas manufacturing is the most important industry in the United States, contributing nearly $2.2 trillion to our economy, and for every dollar spent, another $1.89 is added to the economy, and for near, and for every manufacturing worker hired, there are another four employees hired in an adjacent market. And whereas the average manufacturer worker in the United States earns $82,000 a year, including pay and benefits, and whereas over the next decade, nearly 3.5 million manufacturing jobs will likely be needed, and 2 million are expected to go unfilled due to the skills gap. And whereas increasing the exposure of manufacturing careers within our local area to our students, educators, business owners, media, and politicians is needed to bridge the gap in skilled labor shortage and create viable career pathways for students and adults. And whereas manufacturers and educational systems such as the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Initiative, Los Rios Community College District, Power &amp; Alliance, Valley Vision, Sacramento State University, California Community College, the United States Congress, Sacramento Employment and Training Agency, California Manufacturers and Technology Association, SME Sacramento Valley Chapter 145, California Food Producers, North Central Counties Consortium, Yolo County Workforce Development Board, Golden Sierra, and JP Morgan Chase &amp; Company have worked together to promote careers within the manufacturing field. And whereas the city of Rancho Cordova appreciates all of our manufacturers, and we have a lot in Rancho Cordova, as you are well aware, for the commitment, for their commitment to the betterment of the city of Rancho Cordova, now therefore be it resolved, the city council and the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize October 2018 as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month in the city of Rancho Cordova. And witness thereof, our mayor has signed this proclamation and affixed the city seal this first day of October. So I'm going to hand this over to you gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Thank you for representing our vast manufacturing industry in Rancho Cordova, of which we are very proud and of which we, as a council, are very interested in promoting. So if you guys have a couple of comments of this one you'd like to make, we'd love to hear from you.
Yes. Well, thank you, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is George Vernet III. I am CEO of Trytool, Inc. We are located off of Sunrise Boulevard in the old IRS document storage warehouse.
You're hard to miss.
Yes, sir. That's, yes.
Yeah. Interesting use.
And so as CEO of a family-owned and operated business, I am second generation. I took over for my mother three years ago. But I am here to speak mostly on the behalf of the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Initiative. I am Vice President of SVMI and also Assistant Secretary. What I am here to speak about is to remind everybody of the older days of Rancho Cordova. And I'll tell a quick little story. In 1956, there was the Thor Project out in Security Park Drive. From that led into the space exploration and the space race of the Saturn IV, Saturn V, and all the different Saturn series rockets. If you're familiar with the old dry fuel rocket test engine silo out there at Security Park Drive, I wasn't lucky enough to be around in '56, but in the '80s, we were still firing those rockets up. And that is where Trytool was located during those times. So I got to feel the ground shake, the flames, the heat from that, that activity going on where they might have had 10,000 gallons of water being pumped through there to cool the system down. This was exciting for me. So what does this have to do with manufacturing? Well, manufacturing includes all fabrication, all building of things. Not everything is new construction. You get into the maintenance and then decommissioning needs with everything that we build. So when we talk about the education and the skills trade gap, we notice we are not teaching our future generations the technical skills. Questions I present to board of directors or the board of, the educational board and superintendents, I'll ask them, why is a manhole cover round? And not, not to challenge them, not to bring them with a question that's kind of hard, and I'll mention, a child working with his building blocks may have the answer. And it's as simple as the diameter cannot fall within a smaller diameter, unlike a square or rectangle. Now, these are some of the soft skills or some of the, the needs and technical training we need for our youth. And so SVMI's mission, and we are dedicated to it, as manufacturers, executives of manufacturing, working with our educators to create this educational path. And this is manufacturers working with the educators so that they know the 60% of students that don't go on to a post-secondary education have an ability to go somewhere, get a job, make good money, raise their families, and have a great career path. Then they may go on to post-secondary, a community college, or a tech trade program. Then maybe even they find out, I want to be an engineer. But when we start off by sending our students to four years of debt to provide them with a job that may not exist because they don't have experience and they're not willing to push a broom, we're doing the opposite. So, from Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Initiative, I notice the clock's not running, so I'm, am I okay? So, our, our mission and our vision, what we are doing here in Sacramento, we are seven counties wide, we're working with all the school systems with, as manufacturers. We have executives, we have, we are the manufacturers, and we're talking to the educators. We had five high school teachers spend three days of their summer break in a manufacturing facility, just so they could have somebody to pick up a phone and call and say, this is happening, please help. And they have that relationship, they have that bond. So, that is what SVMI is here to do. Trytool is a supporter of SVMI. We are here for our future generations, our returning veterans, and our, our friends coming out of correctional institutes. Everyone needs a good job, and sometimes they say idle hands are the devil's playground. So let's give them the training they need for a future of, of livelihood that we have had and been able to enjoy and live by. Last thing I will say is, manufacturing companies probably employ the most diverse set of skills compared to government, military, education, and healthcare. This means we have controllers, we have sales professionals, we have janitorial, we have engineers, we have mathematicians, we have science, we have chemists. Take it across the board, and as I said, besides military and government and healthcare, manufacturers are making the difference. Now, leave you to, and thank you again for this honor of the manufacturing proclamation.
My name is Tim Schaefer. I'm with Saritiz at Sacramento, formerly Promax Tools. Company was founded out of a couple of toolmakers that came from Aerogen, 1967. So we're well steeped in the area of manufacturing. We actually, I passed her on to, to one of our tools that we make. We make about 7,000 of those a day. What's that? She has it? Careful, don't cut yourself. And we're one of the largest manufacturers of carbide end mills in the United States. We are owned by a very large company. We're, the company was founded, again, as California Tool Grinding, then Promax Tools, now Saritiz. Saritiz is one of the worldwide leaders in manufacturing carbide. Based in Luxembourg, they do about $2.4 billion a year in, in business, so. But we're here to stay. We, we've invested the, the beauty of, the process of purchasing Promax started in 2014. They finished it up last September, so we, we've been wholly owned by Saritiz for a year in a tremendous amount of investment. We're about to embark on a $2.6 million project that will increase our capacity. Our plan, right now, we employ about 100 people. This is right off of Sunrise Gold Circle, and we will be, hopefully, in about two years will be employing about 200 people. And these are not low-wage jobs. These are, everyone starts at about 25% higher, above minimum wage, regardless of your skillset. We're looking for people with good attitudes. That's probably the best thing we could say is, you gotta, you gotta pass a drug test and you gotta show up to work. That's really all we need. We need, really steep, really tough, yeah. Believe it or not, we are having some trouble finding people. That's one of the reasons we became an SV, SVMI member, is because we share those same issues with hiring people that, that all the other manufacturers here do. And this is a group that's gotten together and has decided to attack a problem. So, again, thank you very much for being here, and my sincerest condolences for your recent loss. That was a very, very tough thing, so.
Thank you very much. We hope we have your contact information, because we think we have a project that you all should be involved in.
Okay, great. I did invite all of you guys to our open house that's coming up on the 5th, on, on Friday, so you're all welcome to come. It's 11 o'clock, so. All right, thank you so much.
Question. Do you have, you see, you talk to the people in the Los Rios Unified School District and other school districts?
Oh, yes.
Are you having still difficulty getting people who are involved in learning about the skills you need?
Well, yes. It, it is, manufacturing, they're still teaching sort of the old turn-of-the-century manufacturing of what things were, so the students are, have a little bit of a tainted view of what manufacturing looks like. One of the reasons we're inviting people...
We hope we have your contact information because we think we have a project that you all should be involved in.
Okay, great. I did invite all of you guys to our open house that's coming up on the 5th, on Friday. So you're all welcome to come. It's 11 o'clock, so. All right, thank you so much.
Question. Do you have, you talk to the people in the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District and other school districts?
Oh, yes.
Are you having still difficulty getting people who are involved in learning about the skills you need?
Well, yes. It is, manufacturing, they're still teaching sort of the old turn-of-the-century manufacturing of what things were, so the students have a little bit of a tainted view of what manufacturing looks like. One of the reasons we're inviting people into our facility, we're very low-impact. Everything, all of our raw materials come in by UPS and all of them go out by UPS. We have, every, 100% of our process is completely recyclable. There's nothing that goes to waste in our facility. So that's what we want to show people. We want to show people, when you go through our manufacturing facility, it's fully automated, it's fully high-tech, it's clean. It is really a clean working environment. So that's, again, one of the reasons we open our doors. It's not something we, we'll do tours from time to time, but it's not something we generally open our doors to have big groups of people. There's some inherent issues with, you saw the tool that we make, there's lots and lots of those around, we wouldn't want to see people get hurt.
Your cleanliness is probably a legacy of everyone's time at Aerogen.
Absolutely true. And our parent company is very environmentally conscious, and they really push making sure that we're operating a very, very clean operation.
Super. Maria, did you get a photograph?
I think we should probably do a photo. Yeah, we are so supportive of your industry, and please, if there's ever anything we can do to assist your industry in general, any of your partners, competitors, whoever it may be, in Rancho Cordova, we'd be happy to do so.
I will say, I want to give a nice shout-out to your economic development team. They came over and, we've worked with them already. They have done a great job with our expansion plans and the things we need to do, so, thank you.
I also wanted to throw out there that it is getting better. It's not as much of an uphill battle as it was 10 years ago, 12 years ago, five years ago. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's amazing how much manufacturing we do have in Rancho Cordova, and we don't really know it until you, until you.
Variety of what manufacturing is.
Thank you.
And for those of us who might have missed an email, when is this tour on Friday?
It's Friday.
Oh, Friday at 11:00.
11:00? Okay.
Who was asking that question?
I was.
Okay. Yeah, Friday at 11:00.
And that is part of the manufacturing tours, there are a lot of them going on.
Yes, there's 26 events going on for the whole month.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it's almost every day.
Can you provide a list to our city clerk?
I can't do it right this second, but I could do it.
Well, no, not off the top of your head. And actually, we should probably also mention that today apparently marks the start of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Okay, now we're going to turn it over to our city clerk for a presentation about the upcoming election.
Stacy Leitner, City Clerk and Elections Official for the city of Rancho Cordova, thank you for letting me address you today. So every election matters, and I would like to take just a moment to share some important information with you about the 2018 statewide general election. For those of you who don't know, you can register to vote at the California Secretary of State's website, and I have placed the website address up on the screen. So anyone out there watching on television or in the public, if you are not a registered voter, you can go onto this website and register to vote before October 22nd of 2018. You can also pick up a voter registration card, which looks like this, I'm holding one up. We have them in our main lobby at Rancho Cordova City Hall, or they are in the back of the room for you to pick up as well. What is important is that in order to vote in this election on November 6th, is to make sure that you are registered to vote by October 22nd. That is the deadline, to make sure that you are registered to vote. It is important that, in order to vote, that you be 18 years of age and a U.S. citizen, but many don't know that you can pre-register to vote as a young teen at the ages of 16 and 17. So if you have a young teenager at home, or you are a teenager, ages 16 and 17, I would encourage you to also go on this site or to pick up a voter registration card and to get registered to vote, so that that is in place when you do turn the age of 18. And then a couple of important dates that I would like to bring to your attention. The Voters' Choice Act establishes early voting options for the election, and there's four dates that I have put up on the screen for you. The first is October 8th. Vote by mail is available, and ballot drop box locations will be open. The city of Rancho Cordova will be a ballot drop box location, and anyone who completes a ballot and turns it in may drop it off here at Rancho Cordova City Hall during regular business hours at the front desk. Ballots will be mailed within the next week or so, so those will be arriving in the mail. October 27th is the next date that I would like to bring to your attention. Vote center locations will open within Rancho Cordova. Coriana Plaza will be one of those vote center locations that will be open on October 27th. Third date that I would like to bring to your attention is November 3rd. There are several other vote center locations that will be opening up in Rancho Cordova. Rancho Cordova City Hall will be one of those, as well as Folsom-Cordova Community Partnership and George Washington Carver High School. Election Day, of course, is November 6th, and I would encourage everyone to get out there and vote.
So, can people still vote on November the 6th?
Yes. They can vote on November 6th in any vote center location, and the time for that is 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Adjacent to Rancho Cordova, the Rancho Cordova Library will also be a vote center.
Yes, there are many, many vote centers, and to find them, you can go to the Sacramento County website to find all of them.
The library will also be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Or, was it 8:00 p.m. you said?
8:00 p.m.
Yeah. They were not back during the spring, during the primary, but because of the confusion, they decided that all of their libraries that are open as vote centers will be open for the full breadth of the voting hours. And I asked about voting on November 6th because that was the biggest question we got back in the spring. How do I still go vote on Election Day? We just don't have local polling places anymore.
That is correct. And these vote centers that are open, many of them will be open four days, many of them will be open 11 days. And so I would encourage everyone to either read the information that the County of Sacramento Elections Office is sending to you in the mail, or go to their website for more information.
City Clerk's office and I have been out. We registered kids to vote at Cordova, a couple of classes at Cordova High, and then we went over to Kenny, and we have an invitation to go to George Washington Carver also. So we'll probably be doing that, too. And according to the media, the number of young people between 18 and 29 registered to vote has gone up something like 125% in this last two years.
So. If anyone has any questions about the elections that the City Clerk's office can answer, you're welcome to call the main line, which is 916-851-8700, and ask for the City Clerk's office, or you can go to our website at www.cityofranchocordova.org. Find the City Clerk's site, as well as the elections, and there'll be information there as well.
Super. Thank you, Stacy.
A couple of clarifying questions.
Yes.
Mayor asked, can you vote on Election Day? You can drop off a ballot on Election Day, correct?
Yes.
But you need to drop off the one that was sent to you.
Yes.
And then, if you lost your ballot, can you still fill out a provisional at any of these voting centers?
Yes.
Okay. And then the final question was, because there was some confusion about this, did you have to stand out there? No, it was, it was Kelly that did. So we are, on Election Day, we are going to be open till 8? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay. It is now time for public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda may do so at this time. And again, we hope that anybody who's left has filled out a voter speaker registration card. And do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We do not.
Okay, then I won't go any further with that one. So it's time for council reports. So, Donald.
Yeah, so debating on what to start with, I think I'm going to start with the sad stuff and end with the good stuff. So first off, my condolences go out to the Stacy family and our police force and our Sheriff's Department and everybody who lost a great person, far, far too young, just a really, real tragedy for our community and for our team. But I do want to thank all of our staff, Marie and everybody else that worked so hard getting prepared for that memorial service. That was the first one that I've ever attended, and it was very moving, very emotional, but I think it was a great tribute to Mark and to his family and everybody else. And then I want to thank, honestly, I want to thank the community. Dutch Brothers, so many people that have done candlelight vigils and saved money or donated money, all of the ribbons that have been put up all around town and everybody else. It's really interesting, and I'll talk about the airshow in a minute, but it was really interesting that the conversations that I had with everyone about Mark's death was, how could they help? What could they do? Is there anything possible that we can help with? And it's just this outpouring of, I want to do something. And I hope that we can somehow harness this energy that we've had from this to turn it into something that's great for our community in the light of such tragedies. And so, again, I just want to thank everyone that worked really hard over the last couple of weeks to make sure that we paid a tribute to him. So with that, I'm going to move on to the airshow and talk about what an amazing three days we had. Probably, well, I've only been to two night shows, so I must say that's probably the best night show I've ever seen, and arguably maybe the best airshow performance I've ever been a part of, and the best fireworks show, hands down. Then again, you don't usually blow up a wall of fire at the end of your fireworks show, so that was really cool, too. So hats off to everyone that was involved in putting that together, especially our police that had to come out there, you know, a couple of days after everything that did happen, and, you know, hand out tchotchkes and have the dog there and everybody else, and just hats off again to everyone that worked so hard to put that together. And then finally, oh, yeah, okay. And then finally, I wanted to bring up, we had an Air District meeting last week, and subsequently to that meeting Larry Carr actually didn't attend so that he could go over to the California Air Resources Board. Sacramento has been awarded another monitoring station, not for the normal ozone like we do for healthy air days and stuff like that. It's actually to measure toxins and some other stuff, but that should be going up in the next year or so. And then two of our members of our board, Phil Serna and Eric Guerra, and actually, I think they were with Barry over in Germany, exploring a lot of clean air technology and electric vehicles and some other things like that, to see if there are things that we might be able to fund at the Air District back here or work with folks here to do it. So, cool stuff to come with the Air District these days. And I think that's pretty much it for me. As soon as I said "dog," huh?
She's very upset right now. This is the first candlelight vigil I've had to give. First of all, I want to, our heart goes out to every one of the family members, the whole community. It's been amazing how we've rallied, but it's sad that we had to even talk about this. Thank you to a couple of places I went, which is Brookfields, great stellar partnership, Dutch Brothers, amazing, and Minchies. You know, they're trying to do what they can, and that's the best thing they can do is try to help out the family. Had to do my first candlelight vigil, didn't know what to do, because I went there and then immediately the news showed up, and they pushed them in front of my face, and I was like, well, I'm just going to have to pray, because that's the only thing I know how to do at this kind of thing, because it was a funeral. And, you know, it's one of those things, I just know that the cities, you know, were with them and were saddened, but we're going to get through it together, and we're going to be better and stronger and make sure, hopefully, the security that we don't have this happen again. On the side note, I went on a ride-along with a lady named Mrs. Bell, and she took me through all of Rancho Cordova, and Ball, Mrs. Ball. And it was amazing to see how things have improved, and it's also interesting to see what little things that we can do that can really make the city amazing. So I'm hoping to work with her on maybe something that can help us get rid of the stumps in the city, but we'll see how that goes. I got to go to an amazing airshow. One of my good friend's wonderful wife put it on, and you can tell she spent many countless hours, because there's more explosions and fireworks than I've ever went to. I got to go see San Joaquin College, it's now opened, and they're bigger, and it was quite disturbing, because they did a C-section birth, and I've seen two of those, and I didn't really want to see a third, but I did. But it was with plastic, so that was interesting.
It was a simulation.
It was disturbing. Yeah, this is pretty awesome. It was great to see Ami Bera and the other politicians come into our city, both sides, because it's cool that we've shown up on the map so much that now we have both sides kind of coming and talking. The third thing, which is fun, I was out door-knocking in our community, and Rancho happens to be a very special place. It is the only place I know where you can door-knock, go talk to somebody about their boat, and how they're catching fish on the delta, drive away from the person, then have the person get in their car, flag you down, and give you salmon out of the back of their house, and say, thanks for showing up, here's some salmon. I was like, I've never, our city is so friendly that we're like, hey, so great to see you. You want some salmon? I brought the kids with me, they're like, why don't you bring your kids on side? I was like, no, you can't go into a perfect stranger's house. Yet, but it's just, our city is something special, and I never want to lose that kind of feeling that we are, as much as we battle, we are all friends, and so it's very close. And lastly, Carrie did something very, very special. So when I was out, I met a group and a lady who had taken a person and was, they were living in their back shed for the last six months. And so I got ahold of code enforcement, and she was looking for help. And Carrie went out of her way to work on the weekends to try to find housing for these people. And I don't know of any code enforcement that I've mentioned, the difference is, I think with our group and other group, is they care. It's not a job. This is their family, their friends, their community, and she's looking at ways to make us better. So, I mean, I didn't get a chance to say it, but, you know, I'm sure she's watching the TV, but you guys, our code enforcement is something special, along with it makes it, and the fact that the city council and the communities behind them is something special, too. Thank you.
I attended a number of things over the past couple of weeks with the unfortunate passing of Deputy Mark. The sheriff's press conference downtown, where he talked about the events that day, the funeral and the burial this past weekend, and it was very moving all around. I think I've heard a lot from our police department about the love they're feeling from our community, and I'm pleased with that, really excited about that, actually, to see our community come out and support law enforcement and our city in the way they have. I probably received somewhere between 10 or 12 requests from residents in the past couple of weeks, and it was along the lines of, would it be okay if we did this? Crochet a blanket? Make cookies and drop them off at police headquarters? Stand on a corner waving a sign? It was requests like this. And I, you know, I don't have the ability to say yes or no to these things, so I just said yes to all of them. Because I figured, you know, anyway, people wish to express their love for our PD and their sense of loss in our community is probably appropriate. But it was very moving to see that, and very moving to see how well our staff and police department came together during this tough time. So congratulations to those of you who were able to muster that effort on behalf of our community. That was very well-received, and I think a net, although a terrible loss, a positive in seeing something positive come out of something so negative. The airshow was a great success, as it has been going on for a while now. I think we're one of the top 10 airshows in the country, which is, I mean, that's an exciting role to be in, it's also a bit of a challenge to stay there, is my guess. But we've got a lot of momentum as an airshow, and I can't wait frankly to see what they do next. do next. Now, the one thing at our airshow that I thought we could have done a little better was have the International Space Station fly through that night show just about a minute earlier than it did. I don't know why we didn't arrange that, but...
I love how you all look at me like I have a standing afterward. I will, I will remind you, I was a single dad for the week leading up to it.
I'm looking at you because you've made a great sacrifice, the way my wife used to feel about the Fourth of July and how I would be absent for a month in advance of the Fourth of July. In any case, that aspect, the International Space Station appearing in our night airshow, that ought to go down in some sort of history of Rancho. I don't know how many night airshows can actually make that claim, but that was, that was truly outstanding. That was it, because I'm one of the geeky people who have it on my phone. And I was actually looking at that dot going past the moon and I'm thinking, "That's the space station." So I looked on my phone, sure enough, it is, and the announcer said, "And appearing now in the middle of our night airshow here in Rancho Cordova is the International Space Station." And he said, "Folks, you can't make this stuff up." And it was perfectly timed right by the moon. It was awesome. I was able to attend the mock program at Cordova High last week. So this is Conrad Mayer and his wife and numerous Cordova High teachers and staff who work on that program and all the kids in that room. If you haven't had a chance to do that, I would encourage you to. The kids are given sort of a weekly feeding and lecture and coaching session on Thursday afternoons at 1:30 to show up in, I think it's B, maybe B3, B wing anyway, very close to the parking lot, Conrad's room there. It's really remarkable to see all these kids from diverse backgrounds coming together to sort of have mutual accountability about how well they're doing in life and at school. It's a really, it's a really great thing to see and I encourage you to participate in that if you can. And finally, I had another of these basketball sort of get togethers today with the school district, the park district and the two agencies that we've sort of funded, and I'm sitting there as president of RCA, trying to figure out how we roll out a basketball league in Rancho Cordova. School district participation with Peter Maroon as the district athletic director is extraordinary. Park district participation with their new staff is extraordinary. And I think come January, we will have at least one league rollout and we're now debating what the scope of that is. Is this a kindergarten to eight? Is it a first grade to fourth grade and then a junior high element? We're, we're debating some of those details, but I'm relatively certain at this point that we will have a new basketball league coming together in Rancho Cordova. It will be called the Rancho Cordova Youth Basketball Association. It'll be modeled after the Folsom Youth Basketball or Roseville Youth Basketball, both of which are very successful programs. We'll probably start small, aim high after that, and it is a unique collaborative event that I'm pretty excited about. So you'll hear more about that in the future. Thank you.
Well, the Bayside Church and the almost 3,000 people that were there, it was amazing when you have that kind of turnout and you have people who were so responsive and doing so many things trying to show that they care. And that was just unbelievable. The people who were there to talk, some didn't want to say anything because it was kind of hard for them to say anything. It was such a warm, wonderful event that they had and the family was there and it, I don't know, it's just kind of hard to describe how everything was done. I know the helicopter that flew over on that, that flyover there was so well done. It just, it was great to have that kind of a thing. I know, we talked about the businesses and the people and I'll just talk about one. Pet Boys, they're taking care of their employees, they're taking care of the community, they're taking care of everything that they can to make things easier if possible. And I'm very glad that we have people like that in our businesses here in Rancho Cordova. It was really great to see everything that they were doing and are still doing. The International Space Station, which we talked about and David talked about, there's, if you want to see it, it's still going to be up visible, I believe, when I brought it online. You go online and, or just go to Google and ask for the, when can you see the International Space Station in Sacramento area? And you'll come up and it'll show you how high it is above the horizon, when it comes up and the time there and everything. And it's supposed to be very visible until October the 6th. You can bring that up on Google and just ask them, "Where can I see the International Space Station?" It was fantastic to see that there during the space, the, our airshow. Because it was definitely not even thinking along that line. And then all of a sudden here's this very bright dot off in the distance going by the moon and we had the fireworks going on and then the announcer said, "This International Space Station over there." And I thought, "Well, we can really take advantage of that with..." I mean, how many other airshows have the International Space Station as part of their show? You know, it's, it was fantastic. But anyway, it was something that was just another feather in the cap, even though we didn't have anything to do with it, sort of, with the International Space Station. But that was exciting. Used to be able to see a lot more, I think, those satellites and everything, but that was something that was really worthwhile to see. So anyway, I'm just going to end with that. I don't have any in my, nothing new for the mosquito vector control board. I know that one thing that was in the news is the third person died from West Nile virus in California. And it's, again, it's not one of those things that you just have to brush aside. It is not something that is, something you can just do that with. So anyway, anything that you see, like special crows and magpies, they have no antibodies to stop, if they get bit by the mosquito with the West Nile virus, they're dead. So if you see any, please call the mosquito vector control board and let them know that this is where it happened and all that sort of thing. Because it's important for everybody to find out about that. So I'm done with that right now.
Thank you, Bob. So I would also add my thanks to the, to all of our community, our business community and our residential community here in Rancho Cordova for their actions this past week supporting the Rancho Cordova Police Department and our, and the wonderful people who work there. Everything everybody has talked about has been extremely heartwarming and so important. We, we, we have said from day one that this, that this is a family and it includes, it includes our city staff, it includes the city council, it includes our police department, our fire department, all the people who live and work here in Rancho Cordova. And this has been a two-week period of everybody acting like a family and it's been extremely The other, the other thing, though, that, that where everybody has really come together has been, has been the airshow. And we do need to congratulate everyone who's involved in the airshow, both the, both the airshow staff as well as our city staff and all of the, the partners who came from around the world. We even had, we even have a team come down from Canada to, to perform in the airshow. And David is right, we're one of the top 10 airshows in the United States and it's been because of a lot of hard work and, and it's given us all incredible hours of enjoyment and just pure fun. In addition to the airshow, I attended an annual Filipino festival over at St. John Bienni. It's something that the Filipino congregation puts together over there. It's, it is the festival of San Lorenzo Ruiz de Mandela and it happens every September. And I first got involved in it because one of my daughters-in-law is from the Philippines and so two of our granddaughters perform Filipino dances in the, in the festival. But it's like most things Filipino, it's always great food. And Garrett, you guys have got to start going. And I think the other thing I want to do is congratulate the Sea Chat Center. The Sea Chat, remember, is the Listening and Spoken Language Program for children who are deaf or hard of hearing that's located over on Coloma Road, sort of at Vehicle Drive. And they've actually gotten a unique grant to start something called the Little, Littlest Listeners Program. And this will help them expand their offerings and really help them serve their children and their, their schoolchildren much better than they have been doing that before. And we want to congratulate them on that. And, and we also want to congratulate Saulborn because we think of them as, as just basically being, providing education about farming to everyone, schoolchildren and adults. But they're also doing a program on girls empowerment over there. And, yeah, they're also doing a program on girls empowerment over there. It meets once a month all during the school year. And so, again, I have a granddaughter who's attending it and I'll be interested to see what it is that they do over there. So with that, we're going to turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to express my thanks and appreciation for all the support that the members of our community and our business community as well have given to our police department for our fallen officer. We have had an absolute groundswell of love and affection and support from coming, coming from all different directions. And in due course, we would be taking some time to, and would be thinking of some proper occasions to appreciate and thank the police officers who were directly involved in this, some of the sister agencies that have assisted with this incident. And like I said, the direction, the support has come from all directions and from all, many, many different people. Also, related to the airshow, I had the honor of attending and, and also had the honor of pushing a button that set off the, the wall of fire. So that was quite an experience and I think, I think a bucket item list has been, has been met for me. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
That's very funny. Actually, we should also mention that there is a vigil scheduled tomorrow night at the Village Green Park at 6:30 and I know some of us will be in attendance there. So we're going to move into our consent calendar. We have a large consent calendar tonight consisting of eight different items which are deemed routine and can be approved all in one motion unless we have someone signed up to speak to one of them or one of the council members wants to pull one from the agenda. Stacy.
I do not have anyone who has signed up to speak on any of these items.
Okay. Gentlemen, does anybody need to discuss any of the items?
See, and then I'll move the calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. You want to call the roll?
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Those consent items carry. And we'll move on to our consent public hearing items. We are going to pull 14.1 for discussion and...
14.2?
I'm sorry, 14.2 for discussion and a voting procedure that is similar to what we did at our last meeting as we approved a CFD. So Stacy, do me a favor and read item 14.1.
A resolution creating special tax area zone 24 and an ordinance establishing a special tax for transit-related services for the European Parts Depot Project.
Thank you. So we're going to open the public hearing and ask if anybody came to speak to that item. Did any of the council members have any questions? Then we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. So do you want to read item 14.2?
14.2, action, items related to the formation of the City of Rancho Cordova Grant Line 208, Community Facilities District Number 2018-1.
Thank you. So this is the time and place for the public hearings in this council's proceedings for City of Rancho Cordova Grant Line 2008, Community Facilities District Number 2018-1. These hearings are to inquire into the formation of the district, the levy of special taxes in the district and the need to incur bonded indebtedness in the district. Before I formally open the hearings, are there any property owners or registered voters in the district who wish to file written protests? That would be anybody I can't see behind the podium. If so, they must be filed with the city clerk now. And I don't see anybody jumping up. So we'll open the hearing. This is an opportunity for comments, questions and protests from the audience. And again, I don't see anybody jumping up, so we'll close the hearing. So it's time for council questions. Are there any questions about what we're doing with this particular item? Okay. So we then need to consider the first three of the resolutions. There are items one, two and three under the resolutions and we will need to take votes on each one of those independently. So if there's no further questions, then I would ask for a motion on resolution number one, forming the Community Facilities District and levying a special tax in City of Rancho Cordova Grant Line 2008, Community Facilities District 2018-1.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Stacy, call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. All right. The second resolution is deeming it necessary, necessary to incur bonded indebtedness in the City of Rancho Cordova Grant Line 2008, Community Facilities District 2018-1, if there's a motion for that one.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. And the third resolution is calling for a special election in the City of Rancho Cordova Grant Line 2008, Community Facilities District 2018-1, if we have a motion on that. Thank you. I'm sorry, 208, not 2008. Sorry. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
The motion was Councilmember Terry.
I think so.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. So at this time, we'll ask the city clerk to open the ballot or ballots and announce the result of the election.
I have received 100% of the ballots and they have passed by more than two-thirds of the vote.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
They're all in favor, yes.
Good. So you're supposed to complete one copy of the certificate with the election results.
I will do that after the meeting.
Very good, thank you. So the results of the election being unanimously in favor of the levy of the special taxes, the establishment of the appropriations limit and the incurring of unbonded indebtedness, we may now proceed with the final actions for the district. And so we have two resolutions remaining. Well, actually, we have a resolution and, and a first reading. So the first resolution is declaring the election results for the City of Rancho Cordova Grant Line 208, Community Facilities District 2018-1, if there's a motion for that. Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. And now we need a motion to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova levying specials taxes within City of Rancho Cordova Grant Line 208, Community Facilities District Number 2018-1. Thank you.
Name a second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. All right. That item has been successful. So we have no public hearing items, and now we go to our single, regular calendar item. Good night.
You came for just that?
Yep.
I appreciate you.
I'm Kim Duran-Caro-Gorgio, Administrative Services Director. And my report this evening will provide a preliminary financial report for fiscal year 2017-18, primarily focusing this evening on the city's general fund. While these numbers are preliminary, our final numbers won't be available until after our audit is complete in the month of November. However, we do believe that the numbers represented to you tonight will be very close to the year-end actual final audited numbers. In addition, this preliminary financial report provides the City Council with the opportunity to approve the proposed budget amendments for this past fiscal year prior to the beginning of the audit process. So I'd like to start by giving an overview of the city's finances focusing on the general fund. If you look at both the middle column, the one that's labeled fiscal year 2017-18 budget, and then the one to the right of that that says 2017-18 preliminary actual, those are the two columns that I'm going to be discussing and comparing. So total general fund revenues for fiscal year 1718 were budgeted at just under $50.2 million. And just want to point out that that does not include the Community Enhancement Fund sales tax dollars. Those are accounted for in a different fund. And if you look at the year-end actual overall general fund revenues, are estimated to exceed the budget by about $2.5 million. And that is due to some unanticipated tax revenues that came in during the course of last fiscal year that I'm going to get into a little bit more detail in a couple minutes. Overall, that amount of $52.7 million of what the city actually received is an all-time high for the city when it comes to general fund revenues. So we've hit, basically, hit a new level, and we expect that this will probably sustain itself probably into this current fiscal year. So beyond taxes, the city saw franchise fees exceed the budget due to higher-than-anticipated increase in garbage franchise fees. And while we saw licenses, permits, and fees exceed the budget, we did see a decrease from the past two fiscal years. And so we're starting to see a slowdown in the amount of building permit activity during this past fiscal year. And that was a similar story with fines and forfeitures. We did see a decrease in 1718. The category use of money and property, this is where we see the city's interest earnings, did exceed the budget due to rising interest rates and increased interest earnings.
So triple budget was simply due to an interest rate change?
There was another category that was not accounted for in there that should have been, so the budget was a little bit artificially low because of that.
I mean, I know interest rates are up. That was just a surprising factor. Okay.
It was not that much. And charges for services did fall below the budget. And this is really, this is our cost recovery. We anticipate some amount of cost recovery due to working on certain projects during the course of the fiscal year. And if those projects don't occur, we don't get the revenue, but we also see a corresponding savings on the expense side.
Does that represent a dip in development activity? Or what's, it's almost a 25%?
It is primarily related to development projects. If you look at both the prior two fiscal years, not necessarily focusing on the budget, you'll see it's somewhat consistent. It is down. However, the budget is a number that staff kind of works into based on what is feasible during the course of the year. So moving on to the expenditure side, that's the lower half of this graph, you'll see that the city's overall budget of $50.1 million in expenditures, and we anticipate that we're going to be spending about $50.3 million in expenditures when we close the books. And that overage has primarily resulted the fact that we did purchase the property located at Folsom Boulevard. And so that property purchase will require a small budget amendment in the amount of Also looking at some of the other cost categories, we see personnel costs came in well below budget as a result of continuing some staff vacancies that were in there. And also, if you look at operating costs, we came in about $1.4 million under budget. And approximately half of that amount, about $700,000, is related to savings that were experienced in the contract with Sac County Sheriff. Any questions on this before I move on?
The, I'm sorry, I did have one. I thought you were going to continue with another line there. The capital investment.
Are you asking why there's no budget for it?
Did you just clarify why or what that option?
Yes, so the capital investment is a major capital, the purchase of a capital asset. So the $2.7 million that you're seeing there is actually the purchase of the property on Folsom Boulevard, which we were not anticipating at the beginning of the budget cycle.
So with the purchase of $2.7 million, we still are under budget, roughly about $2 million?
Well, not under budget, but when you compare revenues to expenditures, actual revenues to actual expenditures, yes.
In other words, we accommodated that purchase outside of our budget.
Right.
But still maintained a very healthy surplus.
Okay.
Which is a really nice result.
It's a great position to be in.
It is, it is. There's almost no agency that could say something like that.
That's true. So moving on to the next slide, I just want to take a brief opportunity to review kind of the composition of the city's general fund revenue budget. And overall, if you look at this graph, you'll see that 79% of the city's general fund is comprised of taxes. And what you don't see, what's not reflected here, but what is part of taxes, is that 30%, overall 30% of the city's budget is comprised by property tax, which is the largest single revenue source to the city's general fund. And then just behind that, at about 29%, is sales tax. And again, that is not including the Community Enhancement Fund revenues. So something to just keep in mind, as we know, we're starting to wonder when that next economic downturn will occur with 60% of our budget comprised of those two major tax bases that are heavily dependent on the economy. That's just something for us to be mindful of as we continue to look forward to the next two-year budget.
And you're including business-to-business sales taxes in that sales tax number?
Correct.
Yes.
Some other revenue categories that you'll see in here, licenses, permits, and fees, and charges for services. Both of those categories make up about 6% of the general fund budget, followed by franchise fees and fines and forfeitures at 4% and 3% of the budget respectively. So I want to move in and talk a little bit about general fund taxes because, again, this is where approximately 80% of our general fund revenues come from. And we see that property taxes exceeded the budget this past year by approximately $550,000. And this was due to the fact that the city received for the first time a revenue source from something called the Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund. And what this is, is this is money that used to go to the former redevelopment agencies when they existed. When they dissolved redevelopment, those funds were then earmarked to pay off the debts of the former redevelopment agencies first and foremost. And then anything that was left over gets distributed to the taxing entities. So the last few years during the wind down, we haven't seen a lot of those revenues come in because a lot of these, a lot of the RDAs, the former RDAs, still had obligations. Now that we're starting to see the winding down of those obligations, we're starting to see that tax pick up. So that is the reason why it wasn't really anticipated. It wasn't on the radar because we had no way of anticipating it, but it is something that we think we'll see going forward. The other category, sales tax. We saw about $1.4 million more than what we anticipated there. And, you know, it's been a continuing struggle to get sales tax nailed down. The State Board of Equalization has kind of kept throwing curveballs at us. This past, in 1516 or 1617, we saw the end of the triple flip. And now in 1718, this past year, the State Board of Equalization just implemented a new software program.
Is anyone even working at the BOE anymore? I thought they fired everybody. Okay.
And they implemented, one of their mandates was to implement a more sophisticated system. So they worked on that over the last 12 to 18 months and rolled that out during the first quarter of 2018, and that has been met with much confusion. Many filers, from what we're hearing, are having troubles filing their sales tax returns. So that's, in an attempt to try to get their returns filed in a timely manner and not get fined and penalized, they're submitting inaccurate sales tax returns. And so we're dealing with a situation where there's a lot of bad information going into the BOE right now and the allocations that we should be receiving, we may not be receiving. And so it's really a big mess at the moment. In addition to that, they keep changing the way they allocate money to cities. And so they do something called a TRUAP payment at the end of the year to give cities the sales tax difference between what was estimated and what was actually received. One of those payments, the city has historically always received in September, which means it always gets credited to the following fiscal year. This year, in an attempt to try to speed up the payment of these, they gave it to the city in August. We weren't anticipating that change. That resulted in about $1 million more money coming to the city last fiscal year than what we would have anticipated. So overall, those are some of the anticipated things that we experienced with taxes.
It's not the same system they use in the DMV, is it? I hope not.
That's a serious question.
Let me, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure. Why did we estimate, why do we budget $1 million under? How do we, how do we come up with that for next year, for 1819, since we were 15? Why'd you crank it down a million?
So the budget for this current year, 1718, was actually established in May of 2017, right? Yes, May of 2017. So we didn't have any of that actual data. We just, you know, today, or within the last month, became aware of that number, 15.2. So we were really basing it on what we knew at that time, which is about two years, you know, prior data.
Any idea, like, just as you're looking at the numbers, because this is what I have to do all day long, which is horrible, but I appreciate you. Why do you, what do you see as the biggest pull for sales tax numbers to go up by that amount? Because gaining another million, million plus is a huge number to pull out of business owners. So what are the ones that are really making it, making it jump?
Well, keep in mind, so $1 million of that was just because of a timing difference.
Oh, okay.
So a timing difference accounted for $1 million because we got $1 million last fiscal year that we thought we were going to get this year. And going forward, it should all be status quo. The other thing that we're seeing is just the good economy because a large part of Rancho Cordova's sales tax is generated, it's business-to-business transactions, which makes it a lot more difficult to predict because what happens is that what we don't know is if a business in the city makes a major, they do a major capital purchase or capital investment, that creates sales tax revenue to the city. But we have no way of knowing whether or not that's going to occur during the course of the fiscal year. So right now, when we're in a good economy and a lot of those types of transactions are taking place, we're seeing a lot of sales tax revenue come in for that. Or if a company lands a big contract, we had another situation where a company here landed a large contract, and so that generated a lot of sales tax revenue. But those are things that we just, we have no way of anticipating and knowing when we establish the budget. And so we just kind of continue to do our best to get our arms around it.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that slide? So just moving over briefly to expenditures. I've shown this slide before, and I always like to show it because I think it's, you know, really, it just demonstrates what sits Rancho Cordova apart from many other cities, where you see personnel costs account for about 13% of the overall expenditure budget. Most cities, that number will be somewhere in the 70% to 80% range. And so just, you can see a dramatic difference between us and many other jurisdictions. And then the large purple shaded area is operating costs, which account for the majority of the budget, 55%. And that is actually where the contract with Sacramento County Sheriff is. And that contract alone, if you just pull that out, accounts for about 39% of the city's general fund budget. And that green shaded area over on the left-hand side, what's called debt service or revenue neutrality, so 17% of our budget goes to that revenue neutrality payment to the county. 10 more years, 10 more years to go. So with that, I want to move into the proposed budget amendment for this past fiscal year. So something that we've been doing, staff has been proposing over the last several years, is to utilize our general fund surplus dollars to try to eliminate some of the inter-fund debt, or I should say, inter-fund loans that occurred. So the general, that means the general fund was loaning some other funds money so that they could get going when the city started. And many of those special funds did not necessarily have sufficient revenues to pay back those loans in a timely manner. So one of the things we've been doing is just forgiving those loans and trying to get a fresh start. One of those loans, the last outstanding one actually, is the Local Housing Special Revenue Fund. So the original loan from the general fund to this Local Housing Special Revenue Fund was about $3.3 million. And those funds were used primarily for the construction of crossings at Woodbury and Mather Veterans Village. And so over time, a portion of this loan has been repaid. And last year, in 1617, part of the proposed budget amendment was to pay down $500,000, which was approved, and we did that. So the remaining amount, the outstanding amount, is about one, just shy of 1.2 million. And so one of the items before you this evening is that we're proposing to use some of the general fund surplus dollars to pay off that loan in its entirety. This would allow the Local Housing Special Revenue Fund to get a fresh start. They could, all the revenues coming into that fund going forward would stay in that fund to be used specifically for future projects. The second part of that budget amendment for the general fund, as I mentioned earlier, would increase the general fund budget by about another $250,000. And that would allow sufficient budget authority for the purchase of the property on Folsom Boulevard. There's some miscellaneous budget amendments in the special revenue funds and the capital funds, and these are situations where we either received more revenues than anticipated and therefore utilized and spent more of the expenditures based on that revenue stream. And then the last budget amendment would just account for asset depreciation in the city's enterprise funds. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Questions for Kim?
Most jurisdictions in our region are suffering from the onslaught of increases in post-employment benefits. We have continued, I think, to try to minimize our exposure to post-employment benefits, including setting up a small trust to account for future fees we'd have to pay to allow people to buy into post-retirement health benefits, for example, through CalPERS. Have you discovered any other liabilities that we may have that we might want to take care of with a surplus like this?
We have, so as you mentioned, we do have a Section 115 trust fund for what's called other post-employment benefits. That's primarily related to retiree healthcare costs. There is an opportunity for the city, if they wish to, to set up a similar Section 115 trust specifically for pensions. Right now, the city has a pension liability with CalPERS. I want to say it's, I don't know exactly, I think about $3.8 million. And so basically, that's our unfunded liability that we're slowly paying off over the next 28 years. It was amortized over 30 years. But there is an opportunity, if the city wishes to set aside some money, put it in a trust fund. set aside some money, put it in a trust fund. The advantage to doing that is that you can, it can be invested more rapid, or more aggressively. They're not limited to like the five-year investment window that we are as a city. They can go invest in more aggressive and get a more advantageous interest rate. So something in the neighborhood of 7%.
Just for clarity, we may have that liability, but CalPERS doesn't allow us to pay it down, per se. We have to pay it over a period of time. Is that right?
That is correct. I mean, it's, you can send them a check for everything, but, but they don't say your liability goes away forever. So, so that is an option. If we wish to put aside some money, we could put it in that trust fund. It does. However, on the flip side, it locks it for that purpose. The Section 115 trust basically says you can't, once you put the money in that trust fund, you can't spend it on anything else.
Okay. Anything else? Cyrus, did you want to?
I think the only, the only addition to what Kim just mentioned, if the council is interested, this would be a topic that we can discuss as we develop our two-year budget in the fall of 2019, in the spring of 2019. We are working on a number of significant projects, including the Civic Center project that we've talked to you before, and some other opportunities that we would be bringing to you in due course. And I think before we lock those funds into an account, I think we need to see that, what the disposition of those funds may be, and are, and leave that flexibility for the time being. But the only, and the only other thing that I want to say broadly is, thank you, Kim, and thank you, the finance team, for doing an outstanding job. We take a great deal of pride in being financially responsible for, for the community, the funds that the community has entrusted to us. And one of the things that we set to do a couple of years ago, this, this whole notion of inner fund borrowing that many agencies do creates a false sense of having accounts receivable and funds that you really don't have. So we felt it was appropriate for us to pay these down and clean this, and it makes it easier to track, and it makes it a lot easier for us to understand exactly what our assets are and what, what type of funding, and what kind of budget we have. So that's in line with what we've done. We paid down this building. We now have, we own this building free and clear. We've also paid our, some of our enterprise funds, like the Kilgore Cemetery, and, and some, some other funds that we did last year. So this is in keeping with that, and this would really make our books much, much more cleaner than what some other agencies have.
Well, in the end, you can only spend every dollar one time. And that inter-fund borrowing, inter-agency borrowing, almost lets you believe you can do it twice.
Yeah.
So that's the...
And unfortunately, we know other people who've gotten in trouble that way.
Yes, yes. This is, this is a problem.
I will say, I came from an agency that did it to an art form, and we, and we had to in order to survive horrible, horrible cuts from the state. So, we're not nearly as creative as the place I came from.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Okay.
In a good way.
Yeah. So, we need a motion to receive the fiscal year 2017-18 preliminary year-end financial report and adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Stacy, you want to call the roll?
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, so that carries. Kim, thank you very much.
And if I could make one comment, Cyrus and Kim, as we move forward into that budget next year, two things that I'm, I'm thinking of that are going to have a big impact on us. One, obviously, is the property we have acquired, how was that developed? How do we roll that out? What is the impact of that on our annual budget? Second factor, hold on, did I just lose it? No, second factor is our long-term plan with regard to city-owned infrastructure and the maintenance thereof. I've been reading recently, it's actually a nonprofit organization called Strong Towns, which I may have circulated to some of you or maybe all of you. I certainly sent it to Cyrus. It's a discussion of how many cities in the United States actually have an understanding of what the maintenance cost of what they have built is. And so a recent sort of Dallas look at things is, wow, we've built billions of dollars' worth of infrastructure, and now we don't have the revenue capable of maintaining it. So in other words, you've outbuilt your ability to maintain. Every jurisdiction, particularly in suburban development, has that as a big risk. I've talked with Albert, and we have done a study that sort of estimates what our liabilities are going forward with regard to maintenance, and we are not in a bad position. I just want to be sure, as we look at future budgets, that we're incredibly realistic about what that liability is and that we plan for it. And plan over a long time scale, you know, 10, 20, 30 years of maintenance and eventual replacement for infrastructure. We have seen our Park District, our partner in the community, sort of suffer from this over time. Previous versions of the district board and, and organization not planning long-term. We've seen school districts suffer with this, certainly surrounding cities suffer with this. We're in a position, we're not yet in trouble. I just want to be very certain that we are never in trouble.
David, I really appreciate you bringing that up and, and using Dallas as the, as the example, simply because Dallas, when they talk about public infrastructure, it's not just their public buildings and their, their roads and their sidewalks and that kind of thing. They, they have made a huge investment in public art, and that art is owned by the city also. And so, to the extent that as we grow and mature as a city and are able to do some of those kinds of things, because we've actually talked about, we've actually tried to put a piece of art in a public location in the past. And so we want to make sure that, that we plan for all of our city infrastructure maintenance needs, not just the things that somebody might think of as typical or classic, so.
Can I just, I just want to chime in there on David, something that you said. Going forward with the way some of these older cities around us, and the kind of liabilities that they're going to have, like, we're going to be in a position where that, that is a massive competitive advantage to our community, as far as the level of service that we can provide comparatively to other communities, that actually may currently be seen as more attractive, or more affluent, or a lot of other things. The fact that we're going to have the number of cops that we're going to have and other services like that comparatively to a lot of the ones around us. So, planning long-term to ensure that we have the ability to leverage that competitive advantage in the future is going to be enormous for this community.
Yeah, absolutely.
Including that reference that was made earlier to the end of revenue neutrality.
Yeah.
Because that has to factor into our long-term planning.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and just to add to that note, one of the things that we have also done to make sure that we are prepared for the future operational maintenance of some of these facilities, early on, we implemented some services districts related to the infrastructure that we put in place. And those funds, then the way we have structured those, they're permanent sources of funding. As, as the community grows and as we have new residents, we would be, have the ability to maintain those.
Super.
And just a reminder on revenue neutrality, we, from time to time, comment on it critically as a curtain burden, but prior to the settlement, it was going to be a permanent one. It was going to go on forever.
Yes, we do remember that one.
Rather than just be temporary. So, there were some questions about how the, the math might have shifted, given the, you know, tremendous unanticipated Great Recession. But, but now, with the future looking bright and it ending, it certainly has a different, it'll have a different impact on our future than it would have with that settlement.
That's a wonderful thing to remember, Adam. Thank you. So, do we have any council requests for future agenda items? All right. Then we, is there any other business that anybody wants to discuss? Okay, then we are going to adjourn this meeting with much honor and devotion to our Rancho Cordova Police Department and our Officer Mark Stasiuk. Good night.